I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of January 19, 2018 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the Knights of Jip, please?
Second.
Rule call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
That's good for you.
Now on the approval of January 19, 2018 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Rule call.
Anderson. Detlalange.
Yes.
Stuki.
Yes. 1.4 approval of January 31st, 2018 special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept 1.4?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Rule call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Detlalange.
Yes.
Stuki.
Yes. Public participation, Dr. Mr. Schreier.
As President, under 2.1, we have one student success in action presentation tonight. And I'm going to say we're going to retreat. To introduce it, Mr. Frank, Chief High Principal.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Board of Education, we have a fantastic presentation tonight. Mrs. Hultrey, the given here is a specialist for grade 6 through 8 is here for us tonight. You always hear that buzzword step. Well, this is step to the utmost degree. However, it's really cool to get incorporated to different classrooms. You see it a lot of times in the science classroom, what Mrs. Hultrey is going to be showing you tonight. It has been incorporated time and time again, not just the activity you're going to see, but many different activities in many different classrooms, including math classrooms, which is really beneficial for our students. So, thank you, Mrs. Hultrey, and it's all yours at this point.
Thank you. As Mr. Frank said, I'm a gifted intervention specialist for 6th through 8th grade, and I'm also a past 8th grade science teacher. And I've been a science teacher for years, so I have that love of science. So this kind of all starts back in the summer when Mrs. Cook gave me a phone call in July. And she says, hey, I've got this application for a NASA grant on my desk. Would you come in and talk to me about it? Well, being the science geek that I am, I was like, okay, NASA, that sounds great. I'll be right there. So sure enough, we went in and we created what was called a NASA experience. We filled out a grant, and this grant involved teacher professional development to help teachers incorporate STEM lessons, incorporate based STEM lessons in their classroom. So we kind of devised a plan and sent it in. And while it was cold, we found out in August that we got a $14,000 grant to be able to do this. So we were pretty excited. So now it was putting that plan in process. So we decided to have three professional development days where teachers could come voluntarily, and they could learn a little bit about STEM and kind of raise their comfort level. Because sometimes when you say that STEM and teachers being a facilitator in the classroom as opposed to actually teaching, they get a little bit nervous. So we wanted to really help with that comfort level. So we had three sessions. The first was on October 11th. And this is where we had an expert from NASA come in. Her name was Khalila Thomas, and she came in from NASA's Lynn Research Center in Cleveland. And she showed teachers all the content, resources, personnel, everything on the NASA website, and how that could have helped them incorporate lessons in their classroom. The other thing that we did that day is our own Amy Rames and Cheryl Winter showed our teachers virtual reality. And they were in awe. So that was day one. So we kind of captured them right then and there. We had that teacher body. On October 19th, the second day, we wanted the teachers to experience a little bit of STEM lessons. So our NASA expert came down again from Cleveland, and she did some experiments and some STEM activities with the teachers. But we also had Motoman come in, and they did a STEM lesson with our teachers. And Wizards of Wright, which is through Wright Patterson, they also came and did a lesson with our teachers. So they got to experience and see what STEM lessons look like. Isn't that, it didn't just involve science, but it could also involve math, too, because we were really trying to get that math component. Then lastly, on November 10th, that was a teacher work day. Okay, that's where teachers got to get together, and they got to collaborate and make up their lessons. When they signed up to do this professional development, they agreed to develop three lessons. One had to be a virtual reality lesson. One had to be what we call a subject matter expert lesson, where classrooms actually got to do a Skype-like interview with NASA engineers and scientists and ask them questions. And then the third was the teacher-created lesson. So it was pretty cool. The other thing that our lessons wanted to incorporate were the 21st century skills. These sort of skills that are going to help our students that are sitting in our classrooms today to be very productive in the 21st century workforce. So we wanted to make sure that we incorporated all these skills as well. The outcome was astounding. Okay, as Andrea and I went around the district to see all of these fabulous lessons that these teachers created and what they were doing in their classrooms and engaging with fans, it was really, really cool. It was really, really neat. So this is what was accomplished overall. We had 31 total teachers who participated in the professional development. The lessons reached 1,315 students. The lessons encompassed five grade levels, so 4th grade, 5th grade, 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade, and four subject areas. So we had math, science, Project Lead the Way, and computer technology, all represented. All of our teachers expressed that the professional development sessions were very useful, and it did actually raise their comfort level of incorporating STEM in the classroom. And most importantly, through pre-testing and post-testing, the teachers reported that the students actually gained knowledge of whatever content it was that was being taught in the classroom. So we were really happy about all of that. So what I'm going to show you next is a little video that kind of shows you kind of the process and some of the neat things that were doing or that were going on in the district. This is a teacher that I would like. This is a NASA student. This is a real school graduate. And this is a virtual gallery. For all the places that students can go. International Space Station, Mars, moons, SpaceX. There was a difference between the 8th and 9th. So it's just like you're looking at the distance between this. The plane. And then this is when the classrooms actually talk to the NASA students. They come up in these classrooms, and the second person, engineers, will take your questions back and forth to the satellite. This was all of 6th grade. The whole sprinkling we did of the age in this lesson. This is actually the student picture. They're basically together, they're in the opposite states. Watch your body while the bridge is kind of stayed together. And it's got this. And last but not least, the lesson is the teachers themselves. This is probably the fourth graders. Making with 8th grade because they were looking at polymers, how polymers are used in space, and the power of. You'll see this one here in just a second. The 8th graders, the 4th, so the 8th graders did this, the 8th. GPS, when outside, the ride helped them read GPS. Or this. They're creating different cars. These are zip lines that's for rolling, maybe it's. They kind of keep the legs safe, zip line down line to the last. Okay, so next. Last but definitely not least, okay, I have two students here from Mrs. Quozing's algebra class, and they're going to show you the lesson that they did from their teacher going to NASA Special Development, has to do with finding slope. And their teacher is actually, this is Quozing, and this is an algebra lesson.
All right, so we've been using these providers to create an assignment based on slope. We learned about this in our Algebra 1 class at the junior high. And the assignment was creating a marble coaster, which had a hill, a loop, and a turn, as you see here. And if done correctly, the marble would roll through the coaster and down into this cup. The group whose marble maneuvered through all three of these obstacles and made it to the cup and stayed on the track for the longest duration of time would win. And the winning group would have had to make adjustments with their slope all throughout the coaster, so it would be successful.
And how this relates to real life is engineers and roller coaster engineers, they have to think of what they really want in a roller coaster. So number one priority is safety. So we can't have the marble flying off the track, because that would obviously resemble a safety issue. They also want the roller coaster to be fine, so they need the amount of time in the ride to last as long as possible. And that's why we also incorporated the wick-de-loop, the turn, and the two hills. But we also have a budget, which is very important. We each had tape, and we only had three tubes each for the track. So we had to think about all of this when we were making the roller coaster, and how we had to incorporate that. So we have it here. If you'd like to see it.
Wow.
I don't think I even do stuff, so yes.
Does it work every time?
Yes, it should. We had two.
Wow.
They give her a little bit of credit.
Well done.
Any other questions? Ray or.
I do, of course I do. So when it went to the wick-de-loop, did that tape that stopped it, or?
So.
It actually is separated directly, so it rolls off onto this next line.
Oh, it went on that. How many different trials did you guys have to do to get to where you ended up?
So this was in the first quarter. This was like my group's design project. We were both in different groups. This was my group's design project to have it go up this separate hill. And so we, but here today, we had to go through, like, we had to adjust it like at least five times to make it work.
Great job.
Any other questions? Linus Colton, great job. Now, one thing that we like to do at a board, unfortunately it didn't arrive. It's supposed to come tomorrow. What we like to do is give a book to your library, your building, with your name on it. So for example, there will be a book put in the library that will say, this book is presented to the Springfield Junior High because Linus or because Colton spoke at this meeting. You'll actually sign the book, and whenever someone checks the book out, they'll know it's there because of you guys. So when it comes in, Mr. Frank and I are going to find you, make a big deal about you at the school. All right? So congratulations, thank you for being here. But I do have to say one thing. You've got Linus, you've got Colton here, and they've got members of their family with them. Colton's sister is here. Morgan, would you stand? It's her 16th birthday. People are here, it's for her birthday, she wanted to come to a Springfield. I think that's awesome. And Mr. Frank's going to make sure you get a name tomorrow. Any other questions? Guys, good job. Thank you for the board. If you ladies have a meltdown, feel free to stay, but it's a great time to leave, too. As President, that's our student success in action.
2.2, Central Education Association, I don't believe there's anybody from there. 2.3, the classified employees. There was no public participation rearranged. And is there any body that's next to say, go mandate Jip out on public participation? All right, we're moving into the work session.
President, we have several items in the work session tonight to discuss, or to have a presentation. Some of the items will have action items later on in the meeting. We do have in 3.2, a preschool update. There are some things, and as they're setting up their PowerPoint, I'll talk here for just a bit. You'll have the Department of Education has brought down some new possible rules. They're not enacted yet, but they're going to be. And so we are being proactive and making sure that our preschool follows every mandate, follows every rule possible, because we are a five-star step-up quality school, and we want to make sure that our standards remain hot. With that, Carrie's reporter, our principal, and Jessica Jones, our assistant principal, are with us tonight to explain some of those changes and some of the things we're going to be implementing next year, including, you'll see later on in the itinerary, a new calendar for next year that is specifically just some changes for preschool as far as the start time to the year. Guys, I don't have much more to say, I really don't. Good for you. Built's caring.
We're almost there.
But I do appreciate.
Why are you saying that we didn't work?
Carrie actually called the meeting, and we had a lot of us in the room, whether it was operations, whether it was special ed, Tara and I, and they came very well prepared and actually knew exactly what the recommendations were and what we should do to make sure our preschool was compliant. I can't do much more. Don't have a lot. There we go. That was not a bad time. So Carrie, Jessica was talking.
All right, this is.
All right, here we go.
Good evening, I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm here with some updates just about Clear Creek in general. The first thing I want to do, if Carrie's unaware, is we have celebrated our 100th day of school. I just happened to find a picture of Carrie. I like when you see a squad. So there's six quarters, she's definitely supporting the 100th day of school there. And she looks much younger today. We did celebrate with our January cabal. We have built a relationship, we're more welcome to foster care outreach. And through different activities throughout the week, we were able to raise $2,739.56. And that did include one day of dressing like you were 100th, which I think is quarter one. We also have a few other highlights that we're very excited about tonight. We opened a brand-new preschool classroom with Mrs. Hurd, Mrs. Barnes, and Mrs. Watkins. We have 22 of the 32 spots filled. We have two typical spots still existing and eight special education spots that we are waiting to fill. We've been through our waiting list, and so we feel like our class is looking really nice at this time. So all class things over to Carrie, and she'll give some updates from the Ohio Department of Education.
Thank you. As Mr. Schreier said, there are some proposed changes for preschool over the next two years. So one of those that we needed to address rather quickly, because they will not vote on this until July, is looking at our current hours of obstruction. So currently, our students come to preschool 11 hours a week, and that's where I play 384 hours a year. Proposed through ODE is looking at 455 hours a year over the next two, three years. So when we reviewed this with Ms. Hill as well, Special Ed, our Student Services Director, we began thinking, oh, our time is of the essence right now, because our phone has been ringing off the hook about when we're going to do preschool kindergarten registration. So as Mr. Schreier said, we're going to go through that together and decided, looking at the impact, what would that mean to us at February? So we were looking to increase from four to five days, which would give us about 475 hours, which is about 20 more hours than the minimum. We'd be ahead of the curve, and many local preschools have already moved or are moving towards that five days. That will also help with their snow days or those type of things. So one thing we're going to do is look at moving up the start date by week, which will start in the early months to capture some additional time. So those are, that's one of the biggest that would impact us right now at this moment in planning for the future next year for our preschool.
Mrs. Porter, as you go through, if they have questions, you want to wait till the end or any time?
I just got one more slide.
Oh, okay.
But I would say, if you have any questions you may have.
How does this impact if we go from four days to five days? Does this impact the teachers' contract at all? Like typically, the fifth day is used for IEPs and things like that. How would we manage that?
Yeah, we would have to readjust how we blur through that getting some typically Friday was an easy day because we have next due. So we will have to think about how we can maximize their time other days as well when they're in IEPs. Contract-wise, it's the same amount of expenses.
So it's, it still would be the same amount? So it's still within a regular contract, nothing's adjusted there?
The instructional assistants, their day is going to need to increase. I want to say, I forget, you landed on 15?
Yeah, something like that. 15, 20.
But that's not under contract? Like, are instructional assistants, are they under a contract?
Well, we would just, we would just need to change their job description to 183 days instead of the 170 that they have or something.
Which we would bring in, this will be going into next year as we give their contract.
Correct. So it's not like a two-year contract or three-year contract a week?
No.
So we basically are hiring more subs. They're going to be out of classroom a little bit more in order for us to accommodate this. So it's not more on the, it is more on the teachers, but it's not, because they're not going to have that Friday that's a day for us to do all of that. So there's going to be an increase to our budget, because we're going to have to hire more subs in order to allow the teachers the time that's going to be necessary.
One of the things we've tried to do better this year than in the past was maximize those meeting schedules, both on Friday and Friday. We'll stagger, make sure that we're having some.
On Friday, do the teachers currently have any planned time to write the IEPs and like to do collaboration towards that?
Yes.
Would that still be allowed next year? Would that time, would they still have some planned time to do that? Or would the time off just be for the actual reading?
It would depend. Obviously, there's a timeline they have to meet constitutionally, release, pulling it out, meeting, planning, those type of things. So those are all kind of captain's background anyway, not just Fridays. And so like I, what I'm thinking in my head is we're going to have to look at some different days and spread those out like a four to accommodate your parents and your staff.
It's like a great option. Yeah. True as a teacher's perspective, making sure that.
Another question we have is about professional development. Typically, people will cater professional development to Fridays because they know preschool teachers are in session. So I imagine that those offerings will become more diverse and more available, because we're not able to send all five of our preschool teachers out on the same day. So I would hope that the people who provide the quality approved PE will begin to look at spreading that. And so these are upcoming proposed dates for parents' nights for preschool and kindergarten, as well as when the applications will be available. We're working through our kindergarten registration calendar right now. Some of the health information isn't out until the end of the month, February. So all of our kindergarten registration will be online by March 1st. And preschool, that information will be passed out on the evening in the following week for that application. Now, obviously kindergarten will register through central registration this year. Last year, they put together a plan to do that, and it worked very smooth. We need to make more budget feedback on that this year. And our preschool will, again, do the lottery system for the typical, you know, what I mean, here at all of our community is the reason we have preschool is to serve students with special needs. And that's in law. So we want to make sure people understand that typical students have those creative models that help our developing students. So that process is the lottery, which is basically Marshall. They say, if they don't have that, then they'll be able to do it as well. So more information, I know Mr. Marshall will be working on that, getting that out to parents as well.
Mrs. Porter, later at the meeting, we're going to improve change in the calendar. Would you like to explain that?
Sure. I mentioned earlier about starting a week earlier. We want to make sure we can capture as much time as possible to do before the circles that this week, one of my little preview in July. And so where we need a couple weeks, we're going to still have a day and a day for them. We're still going to have individual appointments for assessments, just like kindergarten's free as well. So that's kind of planned for, and it's kind of, I think someone said in our meeting, I think Miss Shuggerly did, it's like Groundhog Day for about two weeks in Clear Creek. It's every day, and another group is coming, and a different group. So it'll be kind of nice to kind of close the gap on that starting every day. So I think that will help if we.
Thank you for the initial.
Yes.
Can you come back to the other screen? So this is all ODE because we serve, because we serve our students with special needs. Any ODE program that has served students with special needs is going to be required, if it's passed in July, is required to do the coordination. Is that correct?
Correct.
For the way.
Yeah, we receive funds from ODE for special education.
So for us to continue to receive those funds, which will be the requirement.
All right. Thank you very much. Beginning of the action item of the board will be the chief.
Wait till next time, I'm going to get a picture of Ms. Jones up there.
3.3 is a high school summer school. Last year when we did this, Mike Myers and Ross, who are both here to present, and I apologize, this year it's just Mike Myers. I think we moved from last year's item and moved it forward. But with us tonight, for item 3.3, to talk about summer school, Mike Myers.
Okay, summer school, as you know, is something that we provide for kids every year. Each year, we go through different iterations, trying to figure out exactly what to offer. There's a couple things that I wanted to point out this year that were making some changes. Historically, we've offered government, government being a testing class. Last year, we only had about nine kids sign up, so we didn't actually build it. So this year, we decided it really wasn't a good idea to have a summer school, so we took it off, and we added Inter art. So summer school this year is now four semester courses to give kids the opportunity to take some semester courses to actually work ahead. So you got Inter art, health, PE, and then financial literacy, also personal finance. So what I provided to you, was our brochure that we are proposing to show. This is my goal actually. And then also a breakdown of what we estimate the cost per class. Roughly about 20 students per class with PE. For obvious reasons, if you ever have a locker in the shoe or anything like that. So really, we're presenting this now. So if you have any questions, we can answer those, address those. And then in the next board meeting, it'll be approved, so we can actually get this out to parents. I've actually filled out about five calls already this week with regards to summer school. Parents are trying to plan their summers and I think you can't get it out soon enough. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
Do we have the dates out? Like, have we approved the dates just for, because I've seen it on social media too, the questions of when the dates are for summer school.
Actually, I'm glad you asked. The dates are on the brochure. We're proposing May 30th through June 12th for the original credit courses. And then for credit recovery, that's a longer process to go from May 30th to June 22nd.
So is that, is that waiting for our approval?
Mm-hmm. Once it's approved, once the board approves it, then we'll get that out so people can start signing up.
So we're not going to vote on it for a month, correct?
That's how we did it last year. You can move tonight if you want, if there's already a question.
It doesn't matter to us, it's just historically we...
Right. You gave like all the information ahead of time. I've reviewed it. I'm comfortable with voting on it for, to help the families.
Before I move forward, I'm sorry. One other thing I wanted to mention is with Intro to Art, there is a fee. So we obviously have to pass that on, like just like we would for a regular school, the fee for those supplies.
So what we're going to do is, Ms. Floyd is going to add this as a 5.2 item for the superintendent to be able to oversee unless there are serious objections. Well, you can go against the lieutenant.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike Myers. So that's five items under work session. We turn it over to Mr. Podell.
Yay. All right. So summer projects, this is my annual meeting that I let you know how I'm going to spend my $400,000 for next year. We've got the new soccer field lights that are down at Wade Field. That is a five-year lease at $40,000. So that $40,000 a year comes out of my, this $400,000, which we had planned all along. So for the next five years, $40,000 will come out of this. We need to do another $100,000 for windows for the high school. We've got, it's desperately needed in the south side that we did last year. It's, you can actually open the windows and you don't have the huge drafts and everything else. So my plan would be to bring that to your, for a vote sometime in either March or April, depending on when we can get that, the paperwork done and all that. But it will be coming about the same as last time. We will probably be installing the windows a little bit later because last year, we were lucky because Tara had enough money where we could get them installed in June and we used July money to, you know, to pay it. But she was able to, we were able to get it done in June. But this year, we're not going to be able to do that. We're going to have to wait until after July 1st, which means we'll probably have an August or September install. But that should be all right. We'll be all right with that. This year, I plan on spending about $100,000 on security issues, additional cameras. I know we've had some discussion about go bags, some door security devices that we've been talking about for several years in the Safety Committee. And then the possibility of doing something for volunteer badges and things like that that we've been talking about. So Heather Baller is here with our, she's on our Safety Committee. So she knows that we've been talking about this for several years. So I want to dedicate $100,000 this year to doing that. And that'll be a little bit at a time. And so I'll keep you updated on that as to what we're going to do. But a prime example is down at Clear Creek. We had a, a parent donate 15 or 20 of the door bar things. And that covers about half the schools. So we're going to have to buy more. And if we're going to put it at Clear Creek, we're going to have to put them in other places. So that's going to have to be a part. And that's not a huge cost. They've come down quite a bit and they're, the fire department and the police department allow them to be put in now so they can get out. I'm putting about $50,000 into a paving. And because of the $50,000 threshold, we can probably get that in without having to do that. We've got a lot of patching. I don't know if you've seen some of the, you know, some of the roads around, not roads, but our parking lots and drives, we need some patching. It's probably all we'll do. I'd like to add some additional parking down to Dennis, but I don't think I can do that for the $50,000 that I'd have. The other amount of money that we've got set aside is for the last several years, you know, we did a traffic study with LBJ or LJB or something like that, LJB, with the city in conjunction with getting the traffic lights all set up to help arrivals and dismissals here. One of the other pieces that came out of that, that we've been talking about for several years, is getting a right turn in and a right turn out lane at the junior high light. Because right now, we have one at the high school, but we don't have, we don't have an easy way to get in and out of the junior high side. So the city has graciously agreed to do the work if we helped with some of it. We're not going to help a lot with it. We're going to give them $50,000, which you'll be voting on later on. The total project, I believe, is...
380.
380. So, you know, they're, they're coming up with 330 to do this project. And it's, you know, for the city, they're, they're being very helpful with this because they don't have to do this. You know, the, the morning commute and the afternoon is horrendous. So this will help a lot getting people in and out of this, the turn lanes. Anybody have any questions about any of those pieces?
When are we talking about putting additional cameras? What schools?
Well, most of the, the high school's in pretty good shape. There's some, a few spots at the junior high where we need to replace some cameras. And then the other buildings, we just need to add some additional cameras and update some of the older ones. So I'm hoping to spend probably somewhere around $45,000 or 40 to 45,000 on additional or upgrading of cameras, so.
And for the door securities, are we talking like a major overhaul in the door security system? Or are we talking, or were you talking the bar thing?
No, we're talking about the bar and things. It's actually, it's something that goes on the bottom of a door on the, on the inside. The fire department can get, you know, pop those up now because they've got the, they've worked with the manufacturers so that they know how to be able to get into them should someone lock it when they're not supposed to or something happens in the room and they have to get in. And so those are probably, and I'll have to go back and look, but somewhere in the neighborhood of $40, $50 a piece. So it adds up with a lot of doors, but it's still a lot less than it used to be. Because when those, a lot of that stuff first came out, you were looking at $200, $300 per door.
You brought it to the policy committee like three years ago.
Correct. And it was. And back then, it was like $300 a door. And there was just no way we could afford that with the number of doors we have. But now it's getting down to where it's a reasonable amount.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Update on testing. We have, our OLPA is just beginning. That was able to be started February 5th and that has to be done by April 13th, I believe. That's for our students that are ESL, English as a Second Language. So they're the ones that, that Matt Blair works with. He takes all those students, he tests them, and he inputs the data into the, into the website that needs to be uploaded into it. And then, except for kindergarten, which are paper tests, and he does, takes care of that also. So Matt does that. He's been doing it for the last several years. He does a great job of, of making that happen. We have our alternative assessments, just, or the test kits for the alternative assessments just came in yesterday, as a matter of fact. Those are for students that are on IEPs that require some, some different testing situations that are much more severe than, than your normal child that's taking a test. And so they have an IEP that is specific in giving them an alternative assessment. That testing can start the 20th and has to be done by the 12th of April. So those will be going out. We've got our, let me make sure I don't, I don't miss any of these. The ACT at the high school, we've got set for February 27th. So that will be a day, just like we had last year, where the only people that come for the, for the school that day are those that are taking the ACT. It's, you know, we had a lot of discussion about should we change something or not. We're going to, we're going to do it again the same way this year. We're going to get a good read on how we think they did and if we want to continue to do it the same way for next year. Because it, you hate to lose a whole day, but the other students are doing alternative education or they're doing college visits, things like that. We've got our air testing. Our air testing will begin right after we get back from spring break. So April 10th is the actual official day of our first day of testing. And so we'll be testing most of the, most of the schools starting on the 10th. The high school is going to be doing a unique thing this year. So if you have any questions about it, luckily Kyle's here to explain. No. So most of the schools, we're testing the same way we did before. We're testing basically one, one test a day or one test in the morning, one in the afternoon, something like that. And we've been working with Cheryl and Amy to make sure we get all that stuff straightened out. And they've been, the principals have been outstanding to work with. The high school is going to be doing a little different. For the days, for the ELA tests are going to be done the same way that we've been doing it. There'll be a release, a late arrival for the high school those days. And it'll be given the tests so that they have plenty of time to make them, get them done. The other tests, which don't take quite as long to complete, will be doing part A and part B on the same day. And so it will, the way we're going to be doing it is during those days, the only folks that come to school for the high school will be those that are testing on those days, just like your intercourse tests and things like that. It minimizes disruption and keeps the educational process going a little bit more, even though there are days they won't be here. To stretch it out where they're doing two-hour late arrivals and then having to walk through the, the school with the Chromebooks because a few kids didn't get done and they have the ability to use the extra time. Well, it was a little bit of a challenge last year. So we won't have that issue this year. So I know that his staff worked a lot on that and I think came up with a good plan to try to minimize disruption and maximize education. Anybody have any questions about those? COGATS and Iowas are going on. Luckily, that's not me, that's, that's Chuck, so I don't have to talk about that with you. All righty, next thing we have is...
I do have a quick question for the ACT day. And I guess this is a question for Kyle. Is there, I, I've heard a few questions, one of them from a family member. Is there a requirement for the students that are not part of the ACT of doing something that is academically associated that day?
Yes. And what's been communicated is expected if they are either doing a college visit or job shadow.
So is there accountability to that?
As far as, are we collecting 1,800 forms? No. So that's what we did last year. I think most took advantage of that. I know also some kids just did regular work that they had with some of their other classes. But we have continued to preach to them. Especially, I had, actually had a couple of parents come up and ask me on scheduling on a Monday, or freshman, parents, current freshmen, just talking about that. Two of the sophomore parents said that they actually took advantage last year of taking their freshmen just to a campus and just to walk around to kind of start that thinking process of what a college actually, campus actually looks like, kind of walk around and see it. That's what we are expecting our kids to do. We have gone back and forth. Do we have to turn something in? The only thing we have to do is park that they job shadowed or put the college visit. To be quite honest, there, we don't know if that's really what happened or not. So to try to work on our end to go through 1,800 pieces of paper to verify that plus on their end to do the same. So it's really kind of for us, it's just an trust factor for us, trusting that they're going to follow through with one of those, those options. So.
Okay, I think that was sort of the question. Because I definitely had seen in your newsletter and stuff what it was. It was just, do we need to turn in a paper stating whatever it was?
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All righty. Washington DC trip. This is our annual approval for our Washington DC trip. We've decided that we wanted to stay with classic student tours. You know, they've done a great job in the past. You know, they're not, it's not cheap, but it's not expensive in terms of, you know, trying to keep this many kids in the same hotel at the same time is a challenge. So it really limits the ability that they, they can do. So they need to, you know, they have to go with the one hotel, which is, which is a good thing because we keep them all together. This year, it's a little bit more expensive. The main reasons are with the, you know, normal inflation. The old bus company they used to use, which had some problems with buses the last few years, is no longer doing overnight trips. So they'll be using Lakefront this year, which are a lot nicer, newer buses, which is really nice. And then they'll also be adding a stop to Mount Vernon. I don't know if all of you all have ever been to Mount Vernon, but that's the bee's knees, is to go to George Washington's home. So for those of you that, that want to do that, that's a great stop that adds. And I think it's a, it's well with, you know, the money that you're spending, it's, it's a great trip. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, number 3.7. One of the things that, that we wanted to do last year, we wanted to get Special Ed rolling. And we've done a great job at that. And thank God, we've got Emily and her crew here that are keeping that straight because it's, the rest of it's all crazy. So one of the things that, that we talked about for the last couple of years is I don't mind doing HR. I like HR. But, you know, it's just one too many hats. And there are things that I miss and things that are not getting done because I just physically don't have enough hours in the day. So we've talked this, about this over the last two years about, once we get things settled in, we're going to, we want to be able to try to get an HR director in there. So I know we talked about this in the fall and, and they said, you know, we're, actually last spring, I forget when we talked about it. But we want to be able to start, get ready for a posting for an HR director. So it would be about the same, you know, value that we brought Emily in at. So we have, you know, we are, when you look at, at who would do, who we are and what we're doing, one of the things that, that we fall on the Y side about is, is being able to recruit quality people. We get good quality candidates because a lot of people want to go here. But with the exception of going to UD last year, that was the first time anybody from Springbrough had been to a recruitment fair in at least the last four years. And so we need to get out there a little bit more. But you've got to have a body to be able to do that. And so we've got, we need to be able to get that in place. You know, and like I said, I do operations, district testing coordinator, human resources, and the district technology coordinator. We do have Kristen Black, who's our administrative assistant. She does have a BS in human resources from UC. So she's a godsend, I'm just telling you. Mindy was outstanding, but, but, you know, Kristen knows some of the lingo already because she's been doing that before she went home to have kids and then started as an aide here four years ago. So she has really come in, she's really stepped up. And for somebody that's only been here two weeks, it's, it's outstanding. And then we've got Marcy, who provides some, some additional support, which, you know, we've really relied on here quite a bit the last few weeks. So for the human resource director, mainly they're going to plan on recruiting assignments. One of the things that we, we can do a little bit better here is to, to ensure that we get the right people in the right place. We do really well, the principals do a great job. But you're missing that one piece of support that's at the district office because I've got other things that are, that are happening. Of course, the benefits management. We don't have a, we don't have an employee handbook, which surprises me because I'm really surprised we don't have one. So that's another job that we're trying to get done before the, the HR person gets in so that we've got a draft of it at least or something, get ready for them to hit. Because you really need to have an employee handbook that every employee gets when they come here, whether they're certified or classified, so they know what goes on. We have an in-processing and we go over things. But we, you know, there's lots of little things, public school works, putting in tickets, spice works, this, that, the other thing. And it gets confusing sometimes is where do you go? Where do you find it? And it'd be nice to have that. We have it in processing and we go over things, but we, you know, there's lots of little things, public school works, putting in tickets, spice works, this, that, the other thing. And it gets confusing sometimes, is where do you go? Where do you find it? And it'd be nice to have that. Workers' comp, compliance programs. One of the things that, that I just do by the seat of my pants is those compliance things because I don't have time to go to the HR meetings. You know, they have Warren County, Hamilton County, they have all these HR meetings, but I don't, I just physically don't have time to go to them. So, so they'll be doing that, the student placements. And when you look at the one graph of us, I mean, we're significantly low in terms of number of staff members to staffing. So that's pretty much, as you go through this, I mean, that's, you can look through, you know, those things that were in the, on that side for you, but our main thing is that we, we want to continue growing where we're growing. We've made a lot of strides the last two years and we don't want it to fall down because we can't get done what we need to do. And that's really what, what we're looking at. Anybody have any questions?
Well, since you've given up HR, I need an assistant football coach.
Sorry, that definitely is not-
We'll start at six o'clock.
Band I could do, but I can't, I can't do, I can't do football, sorry.
We want the buses.
Alrighty, and I, and I apologize that it's supposed to be eight buses, because I added wrong, because it says eight buses, but I added that, one bus plus the other bus. So what we're looking at doing is buying eight buses, because I can't add. But we, we're in desperate need of buses and we talked about this a little bit at our retreat the other day. And one of the easy ways, I won't say easy, but one of the best ways we can do that are short, short-term leases. So we can get buses that are gonna still be useful on the road by the time that they're done. With the last set of buses we bought, we used a five-year lease. This one's a six-year, just because we're trying to buy eight buses. So we're looking at eight buses at $129,000 a year, which is cheaper than the one set of leases that's going off now, and then another small one, I believe, correct Tara?
Yes, we have one that ends June, for this year we've already paid our last payments. That's $133,000 a year. And then we also have one that'll be over in November of this year, which is $15,000. So this lease, I'm assuming, because it said eight buses and plus an additional-
Yeah. Well, it was, it's just, well, and that's, that was my fault, because I thought we were doing another special ed this year, but it's just eight regular buses, yeah.
So we'll have to have them changed.
Yeah, we'll have to have them amend the agenda.
So we'll actually be saving money then, because the world is gonna be spending $130-
Correct.
This year we'll have that extra $4,000 plus an extra, we have a small and dropping off-
Right.
Buses that will probably spend a lot more-
Correct, yes.
-than we like to do here, so.
So that's, this way, and we've got, last year we ended up having to retire five buses. We've got four to five more this year we're gonna have to retire. We'll bring that to you next month. But they are basically not roadworthy at all. They just sit there and taking up a space. So we'll need to get rid of those. We take it down and we put a sign on one of the Clear Creek, the last time, we almost didn't get it back up the hill. We almost had to have it towed back up there. So those are the ones that we get rid of. We use, take those, so if you see the one with the signs, you know that, that we'll hopefully get it back up the hill once we get it down there. So this is, it's one of those things that, that they bought a whole bunch of buses when we first built the buildings in 2006, '07. And so we're trying to do a little bit at a time so we don't get way behind, because that was a huge amount of buses and we're, we're running, we're getting close to the end of their life, but we're stretching it as far as we can.
So this is not increasing any buses?
No. No, this, what, what will happen is by, with this purchase and then the ones we got rid of last year and this year, we'll be right on what we had before, which gives us five spares, correct?
Yes. Five full-size spares, one special needs spare, which comes springtime makes it difficult with what we call field trips.
Correct, yeah.
Because you have all the different sporting events, baseball, softball, track, and then all those are junior high and high school. So I, I myself can come into work at nine o'clock in the morning and we have all five spares available in between maintenance repairs and field trips. By one o'clock they're all counted for and we're still short buses. So this doesn't increase our numbers, it simply lets us make it where we currently are.
Okay. Okay, another thing I'll just add in, because how I've got the five, how I have the five years, I was trying to work within the leases that we're doing on a gap year. And then we worked in a few leases to adjust over time, like within the first year or two, because originally we remember in the five where they had like a million dollars to buy buses like every year. We just, we money out of money when we use the money and then all the second happens. So we took those large amounts out of the capital and we started doing some bus leases. And so we have them set at about four and five years a piece right now. So the ones that, these are gonna be buying, is gonna be replacing ones that we've already been paying. And then you have a small $15,000 that's falling off next year. And then we have another lease falling off, that'll be fiscal '20, July 15th of 2019, which is fiscal '20. So in '21 we'll have $232,000 a year free, which that means we can do another bus lease.
Correct.
Twelve buses, maybe even a little bit more, could stretch it out, because that one's only a four-year, five-year.
That was, yeah, that was a five-year lease, so we'd back in '15.
So we'll have some more. So we were trying to stagger them, so we're just trying to replace, because in the five year I haven't taken any of those numbers out, so I keep those numbers consistent so that when one falls off we can just replace it with another and not change the budget. And so that's all we're doing here is just-
What sort of life do you get out of the bus, on average?
We project somewhat for our fleet forecast, between 12 years or 180,000 miles. At that point, there is a significant increase in maintenance costs. That's about where you really start replacing major components, transmissions, turbos, major bodywork has to be done due to rust and things of that nature. So it's like around the 10 or 12-year mark and around 180,000 miles is where we see a significant incline in maintenance costs. It varies a little from bus to bus, obviously, based on its route needs and things of that nature, but that's, that's our average life expectancy.
And most of our buses, go ahead.
Once the bus is dead, other than sitting at Clear Creek and advertising for preschool or bus owners-
That's right.
Is, do you take it apart for parts, or can you sell it?
We generally sell them on a go-deals.
Correct.
And they're either bought by, a lot of times they're bought for scrap. And that value will change, it'll fluctuate, it's a sort of commodity, so it'll fluctuate. Or some, depending on the level of buses, we've had some churches buy the bus to try to redo it, make church bus out of it.
We saw one, one to Franklin-
Yep.
-a couple of years ago.
We had a bus company that bought some, tried to refurbish them and then we sell them. And sometimes we make decent money on them and then other times, then we kind of make scrap value.
Yep. Okay, so we'll need to amend the agenda to just say eight buses, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have 3.9, House Bill 58, Senate Bill 216. Amber will be leading that discussion, she won't be here for another 15 minutes, so we'll just move that down when she comes, Mr. President. We have no committee reports between the last board meeting and this meeting, so at this point we're ready to move into the treasurer's report.
So you will, you will have to refresh your agenda anyway, because I might have added a motion to amend the agenda over the superintendent section, so if you go ahead and refresh your agendas, like if you go out, go back in, restrict refreshment, make sure you see everything. I've also already changed that now to eight. Now I have to go out and go back in. This is the second. So my first agenda tonight is the financials for January 2013. Publicity and financial highlights, I did go ahead with the board, Agenda Action went live, I went ahead and attached something that I usually hand out, so that I was able to get it done early this time. So the revenue for January, obviously like I said, the last couple of months, very low, 1.4 million, which as you can see, 1.426 of the 1.42 of the state funds, we're getting very little, any other revenue right now. I am happy to say that we did get our first tax advance already for the second half, which came like almost two weeks early, so that was more, it was 1.5 million. Our total expenditures for January was 4.3 million, so you can see how our expenditures were 4.3 million, but we only brought in 1.4 million, so that's where, again, the second month in a row our cash balance has taken a big hit. Of those expenditures, 84% of that was for salaries and benefits. And then we had purchase services, we're down a little bit for the month. And that could be just timing issues, because I think we're fairly, we have some months where, you know, large bills are paid in the next month or previous month, so it kind of throws off the cash flows, but so far we're coming under budget. So far for the year, we purchased service by about 67,000. The one area that I am watching is benefits. We've been consistently coming in a little bit over budget and I'm gonna be doing an analysis within the next week or so, to just kind of hone in, to see if it's, during our open enrollment, if we had a lot of changes. Those reports are usually, they're longer still behind, but I'm gonna dive into that to see if it's something I need to revise for the main forecast, because it has been consistently trending. Overall right now, we're over cash flows, about 124,000. So obviously it's almost $10 million line, so it's still very close, but still that's just something that I'm gonna watch for. We are under budget with supplies by 143,000, but I'm not gonna get too excited about that right now, because it's gonna be starting to do the major push of buying for the rest of the year. If we do purchase orders in the fall, for the year, so they'll start putting in all their final orders for the year. And we'll have like, like the bus parts, they'll be ordering their parts for the summer. The maintenance will be ordering all their supplies and do all the cleaning over the summer, and those are large bills that we have to start to see going in. So that's helping us remain overall under budget. Works slightly under budget in equipment too. But on that, first, the first page, actually on the rest of the screen, the first page in the media, where you can see our cash flow wise, we're running about 82,000 under budget in total. So that's, I mean, so we're still under budget and I still have the budget for five-year forecasts intact, when I revised it in January from October, it's still the same, so I haven't added any expenses. I am gonna be starting to work, setting out budgets at the beginning of March to all of the administrators in the buildings, to start working on next year's budget. And I feel will obviously be some revisions for the main forecast, for the preschool classroom we had to add, because that wasn't in our September's forecast. We'll have the HR director added to the main forecast, some of those types of things, some of the overages in the preschool edition from four to five days. So I'm gonna start to work on that, set out the budget. I can't set out too early because they won't have had enough time to really see everything they need for this year to kind of decide what they're gonna be, their budget to look up for next year. So I usually wait until about early March to set that out. Overall, you know, everything is very stable, like I said, we're under budget, anticipated right now, but I'm watching it closely. We ended cash balances for all funds, it was 12 million at the end of January. As you can see, our cash balance for our general fund was only 4.9 million. So we were getting down there, like I said, we did just receive a 1.5 million in type of business, so we should probably get in the middle of a week or so, so. So that is the January financials. Do you have any questions? The next one is approval for a five-year contract for the GATT conversion, Haffer, which is this patent firm, Associates. They've already been doing it for two years. This year, the two combined is about 11,000 this year, so when you see the contracts that I posted online, they're right around there, it's actually a little bit low for them here. And then they gradually just, it's a possibility that these two are starting, had a three-hundred dollar year to the GATT conversion, $10,000 to a Haffer. But like I said, we've been using them for two years, we're also doing our audit and it makes it a lot, go a lot quicker and it's a lot more seamless when you have the same auditors doing all three versus auditor, one auditor doing one, another auditor, we're having to constantly try to talk and get paperwork to, to do everything, so that's nice. My next item is for amendment of our permanent appropriations. I say this every year, but I always try to, you know, I only do so many different items, but we're required to do a beginning appropriation resolution, certificate of balances available and amended resources. Then we're also required to do at least one amendment during the year. So I usually wait till about midway through the year and see if there's any changes. And then I have to do a final at the end of the year. So this one right here, this is just the amendment that I'm required to do. It's about a half a million dollars difference overall of all funds than it was the last time, and that's mainly our cash ones, and it's because I report as the cash comes in on our 08s, our 200s, and our 300s. So as those cash, as those revenues come in and are higher than anticipated, then we gonna have to up those. So when I do the revision, that's when I request those. But everything else is pretty stable, the, the general fund hasn't changed much at all, so. And like I said, that's just an incorporation that basically is showing that we have enough cash for our anticipated expenditures of that, that we're going to support. Then I have several, at least a few here. Well, the next item is the approval for that $8,000 from the board fund for woven traditions contract. And then I also have a $1,500 donation from Morgan Construction Fund for Jason Cole's classroom at Five Points. An approval of the donation of $800 for Brian's loan here in Nashville to the Springboro Special Olympics. A donation from DonorsChoose.org valued at $1,674.93 for Five Points.
Do you know anything about, Tracy, can you talk about the donor choice from Five Points and then the, anybody for the Special Olympics?
For the Five Points, DonorsChoose, you know, ties back to our model schools trip and some of the things that we learned from that trip, that experience was the flexible seating and those kind of things, within the classroom, having different options for kids, instead of your traditional desks. Bringing in different, you know, things for kids to, you know, sit at or get comfy up within their classroom. And that was all a part of that project, is to have taken funds to, to work towards having that flexible seating and those kind of things within the classroom. The yoga balls, the wiggle seats, the, just the different dynamics of that. And that was the focus of our project.
So is that Mr. Holt or was that?
The DonorsChoose, that was the Five Points one, which was for Mrs. John's project that she, she put in, put out there. And then Mr. Holt is the, is a group. I think it's more, it's science-based related, so bringing in materials and things and doing activities with students that, you know, tie in with science.
I think these DonorsChoose are great, it just gives parents and other family members and businesses an opportunity to donate to a specific thing. So it's great that teachers are putting it out there, so thanks to those that did that. Do you know anything about the Special Olympics? Who that is with?
I don't actually know.
That's awesome. It's exciting, thanks to those people that donated.
Sometimes you'll send me emails and you'll see.
That's all right, that's all right, I was just, I was just curious.
Approval for 1 through 48 draws a motion. Second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion about the woven-
Traditions.
Tradition, or treasure tradition, traditions. They did a great job coming to the board meeting on the 31st. So I'm very excited about having them come to the district and share with the administration and different things with equity. So I, I had asked a couple of questions that he got back with us. My only further question with that was around our equity plan. Once we put the equity plan in place, I'm just hopeful that it will also be able to include not just with the equity, just the professional development piece of it, but that we'll be able to get deeper into the analysis of curriculum, looking through that eyes and analyzing our discipline and is there equity there?
The plan is to build a district equity team that will cover representatives from all six buildings, as well as administration, who will do that kind of-
Okay, so that is, I just couldn't tell from what, how he responded, that will be, I mean, I totally think that all the district representatives should, I mean, it shouldn't be them developing it, it should be the people from this team. So that could be part, that will be part of that then?
Yes, they'll help advise a little.
Right.
But because of all the hours of training, we'll be able to take and run.
Great, great. My other question with that was how we understand, like, since they'll be part of the training of this, what will be, what is the plan to move forward? of this, what will be, what is the plan to move forward to really get the integration within, from what they're going to take to really get it integrated into the buildings?
Great question. First of all, the training, we're really struggling with figuring out when, because it's going to be three kind of half-day things, every administrator, so we can't pull them out of the buildings. So we're trying to figure out what days are better that work around administrators, probably end up maybe in summer. The implementation to the staff and the students will be part of this training. I can't answer how that would work, because I haven't been a part of that. They'll help us in understanding what are the eight steps, 20 steps to implement the staff.
Okay, so that's part of that training, okay. Okay, I just didn't know if that was, if the training was just to them, or if that was part of the training was how to then bring it into, to your teachers, so it's implemented into the classroom.
That is a key part of this training. We talked about it, they wouldn't even come to us if they didn't guarantee that kind of transition.
Great, okay. And I also just wanted to make it clear that this is coming from, we have a fund that is the board fund, that if there's an initiative that comes from the board that we feel is important, this doesn't come from the general fund. This is from our board fund, that we feel that this is an important thing for our district, so that's where this $8,000 is coming from.
It's part of the general.
Well, I'm sorry, it is part of the general fund.
It's set aside for us.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Set aside for us.
It's set aside, that we can't spend, it's not just spent on any, it's spent on a decision that, among the five of us, for a specific thing.
I just, you had asked about the Special Olympics.
Oh, yeah.
I did see an email here that says that it was donated in honor of a lot of our athletes, Jacob, whose father works at the company, and so that's why it was donated by the company, because it's one of our athletes' fathers worked at the company. Awesome.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Take a look at the roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Salaj?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to take a break? See if Andrea's on it.
She's on her way, but we can circle her, but if you want to write...
Go ahead, we'll, then when she gets here, we'll break before.
Yeah, sure.
Did we talk about tuition for preschool?
Oh, my gosh.
It's on number 4.3, but there's no attachment to it.
Oh, that's so weird, I must have told this script over before we voted, so let me go back to it, because that's so weird. I was running through my thing, it was actually a pretty big deal, you've already approved it, so hopefully not.
I was just curious what it was.
You can take them, I'm not sure.
I don't know if I don't.
Just kidding, they have to know about it to know about it. Okay, so because of earlier's conversation, we were discussing going from the four days to five days, we were going to be proposing an increase in tuition anyway, because we are like the lowest school of tuition, and it hasn't been changed in years. So we were looking to change it anyways, only because there's such disparity in how much the program costs versus how much we're spending. Now, obviously, we are required, you know, to have this program to be for children, but then we are also able to, since we have to have a huge amount of special ed children and regular ed children in the classroom, then we are able to add those tuitioned kids and charge a fee for those children. And we are not receiving funding on regular ed tuition from the state. So currently, our tuition is $180 a month, so, and you charge for 10 months of the year, so currently it's $1,800 a year for the tuition, and that is serving this year 383, just 383, 383.25 hours. So when you do the math on that, that is $4.70 an hour. If you take the 1,800 for the year and divide it by 383.25 hours, so it's $4.70 an hour for kids to attend preschool, and that's giving them a snack and providing transportation for them. With us going to five days a week, that's going to be a lot of extra hours, so the new hours will be 475 hours for preschool. So we were proposing to change the tuition to $250 a month, which is a $70 a month increase, but when you do the math on that, because of the additional days you would take, that would be 2,500 for the year, if you multiply by 10 months. If you take the 2,500 and divide it by 475 hours, that is now $5.26 an hour, which is a decrease of $0.56 an hour. So when you put it in perspective of $0.56 an hour, you see that, I know it's $70 a month, but also we're adding a whole extra day, which is adding a lot more hours. So I wanted to make sure I broke it down in the cost terms, because if, when you look at it, you're getting a lot more extra one whole day, it's a lot more hours, it's worth it. I do some more hours, you know, instruction, plus transportation. So that's why the increase, and the reason, normally they, we haven't had an increase in tuition for a long time, so normally the preschool tuition is just approved by the board, I think in like March, maybe, March or April, all the school fees and fees are approved at once, but the thing, we think the literature out, have a meeting, we need to make sure that this increase was discussed and communicated during those meetings, which are happening before we approve the full payment.
What is typical for a five-day preschool?
There hasn't, I don't know of any around, I do have costs that I did an analysis back a few years ago, and I was able to get some of the updated costs. Mason, a year and a half ago, so I'm not sure if theirs was increased, but they were doing four-day preschool, it was 340 a month. Lovelands, 280 this year a month, four days. Little Miami's 230 a month for four days. Massey is 200 per month for four days. We have Franklin and Carlisle, both, theirs was a little extreme, they said 180 to 225 a month, so I'm not really sure. Between the 180 and 225, I don't know if it begins per week, and if you have five weeks, it'd be 225, and if it's four weeks, then that might not be it. I'm not sure, but if you, but still you can see, we're at 180 for four days, we're going to 250, some of these schools are way more than the 250, and we're only doing four days.
So are we, so with the 470 an hour, essentially, I mean, is that designed to offset costs? Is that, I mean, is that...
It's designed to offset the costs, but it does not, and that's where...
So do we need to actually increase that rate along with the number of hours?
Right, so that, you can see we increased it not much, but I mean, I didn't want it to be like a "ah," you know, but if there is a disparity, and as it grows as well, then the costs get more and more of a disparity, because every time we have to add a room, and you have to add a teacher or two ways, then, you know, then those costs far exceed what we would receive in a little bit of additional, we charge $20 per kid, there's only 80 typical kids, it'd be 80, 80 some typical kids. So you're not getting a lot of dollars, but you're having a giant extra cost. So we're quite upside down in the cost of the program, I mean...
Do we know what the hourly amount would be if we were to break even?
Oh, if, 600 a month, I mean, it would be crazy, and I don't even know if that would be quite enough, to be perfectly honest.
I also thought that we, in the past, I think we've heard that we also don't want to be undercutting the private businesses and the community and local, so to Dan's point, I think when it comes time, I think we should look at those costs, if there's a need to raise, if there's a need to raise them for other reasons, just...
And I'll give you a quick example, just so you can kind of get an understanding of the numbers. A couple of years ago, I did it in the end of '16, so it's been about a year and a half, and I did like a whole analysis, and our costs that year were 639,000. We received 278,000 plus from the school, preschool funding from the state, plus we received 21,000, and then we received like 80 some thousand for preschool tuition. So basically, left 340,000 that the district was taking up. So that was after the tuition costs. So I mean, in order for us to pick up 300 some thousand times 80 people, you know, there's no way for us to ever bring you down, because it's, it's not ever gonna, we're never going to make our money out of that. I mean, we definitely look at it maybe, maybe a little each year, I mean, because some of these other schools are already quite a bit higher, and when they go to five days for this, because of this change, they are might be, theirs, you know, who knows? So we can kind of try to watch what everyone else is doing, keep at least increasing a little bit, but I know there's a big change, we're just at one already.
It's about a 12% increase in the hourly rate this year.
It's good.
526 an hour versus before, so we're taking about a 12% increase just in the hour.
This percent feels good for this year, and kind of evaluate to Charles' point, too, of where the community-based centers are, because their hour requirement will not be the same, because they're not an ODE center. So we're not going to see that jump for them, but, and then just to keep in touch, because we do want to be good neighbors, and make sure that, you know, there isn't this huge differential, so I think that it is a big enough jump that, I mean, you don't want to make it huge, because it is, I mean, that impacts families, but I also, we don't want to eat everything, you know, the cost of it. I feel good with that amount of, I mean, it makes sense, that explanation is helpful. I think it's worth looking at, at least evaluating after this year.
That's something I think we'll take to budget finance, maybe I can get an analysis and look what all the other schools are doing, and bring it to budget finance, and we can start picking up a plan, and there's a way for us to look at our costs, look at what we're doing, there's so many regulations that we're, I too, we like, we can't really be creative stacking fines or things like that, but we can definitely look at ways to bring in money, or to try to figure out what we can charge, whatever, so I'm talking about you said, and try to kind of vary, and, okay, so we kind of, this all kind of came on, we had a meeting last week, and it was, okay, we're going to do it five days, and then I'm like, okay, I don't know how much we should charge, and start, you know, going back to the, I'm like, we go up to 300, I mean, that's like, uh, that's like double, you know, so I didn't, I was trying to come up with a half a meeting, knowing that we're never going to break even on this, but I do agree that it should be...
Yeah, I think eventually, there just needs to be something between what we're charging versus what's being provided, and given the considerable efforts and resources that we've spent recently increased, well, I think it's appropriate to reflect that, and I can do, I think, this year, given going to four to five days, and the fact that there's already an implicit 12% increase, I'm with you, but, you know, between this year and maybe school year, 19 and 20, we can go get it.
And there's some other things that we can get to, I know it's not the, you know, thing, but I mean, we provide transportation, and we're not required to provide transportation for our typicals, but we do, we provide transportation, so you're getting a lot for your volunteers, you know, and you're getting that extra day, and if they're going to be paying daycare if they're working, so I think that that's probably far less than they're going to be paying for that, having the holidays on Fridays, cannot have a different, you know, person, you know, different day require, or doing all those days, so I think, I don't think it's going to be a big deal, besides it's elective, so once, we'll kind of be able to see pretty quickly when we see how many people are coming in the door, and what kind of feedback we get on, you know, we have a waiting list, and if people are like, oh, never mind, you know, we'll know something pretty quick off, kind of how it's going to be, so...
Because what we don't want to do is not fill our typical spots.
Exactly.
You know, raise it so much, so there's going to be that, we'll figure, be able to figure it out, I think you're right, we'll be able to see how many are walking through the door, and if we're getting that resistance, we know we're kind of...
Do you ladies have any indication, what do you think enrollment's going to be next? I mean, is it...
Not being here during enrollment cycle, I don't know. I think going, like Tara said, I think going five days without having to figure out what to do on that fifth day will be enticing for families.
The special ed population continues to grow also, in, unfortunately, when the special ed population grows, we have to add just as many typical spots, so that's the, that's the balance.
And the preschool has a very good reputation, so it's a stop after preschool, so I would think that those typical stops, typical stops are going to be filled. I think that adding it mid-year was a different situation, so that's probably why we have the numbers right now, but typically, it's a very good reputation, so I think that they will be filled, but we'll just have to watch that threshold.
Good.
Thank you.
There are three items under the super tense report, and we will approve each one individually instead of consent vote. First one is to revise 2018-19 school calendar affecting preschool only. If you look at that calendar and the attachment, you will see where August 20th says preschool phase in, August 21st, first day of kindergarten and preschool, we are starting preschool at the same time as kindergarten.
So I actually had a comment on this, did we not discuss potentially adjusting Christmas break to account for starting back up on January 3rd? We've talked about it. Yeah, I couldn't remember if we ended up talking to Dan or not about it, Mr. Schwerer.
Well, one, I answered one more number, I'll answer. The question that was brought up was that next school year, we come back on January 3rd for a two-day week, so why not extend the Christmas break and have the students come back on the 7th and be popular for everyone? And it's a great idea, so I call it off school at 9:00 to 9:04, but there's no...
Very popular in my house.
The reason for that, if we was to come back on the 7th, we need to find two more days after, after Christmas break, that's tough. We can easily do it at the end of the year, but that students and staff will be here in the week after Memorial Day, we try not to do that. We could take April 22nd away, that's the day after Easter, but that is a holiday for our classified staff, which then increases costs significantly if you bring them in. You know, there's just, you know, Friday's a holiday, we can take a couple of days away from spring break, and then you have the same thing with short weeks. This is kind of a one, we're, actually, I think a two-year thing, this year we had a short week coming back to, it's just the way Christmas and New Year's falls.
It is what it is.
Yeah, so I appreciate where that...
We're willing with that, okay.
Okay, draw the motion to accept 5.1.
So moved.
Second?
Same.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Salaj?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Item 5.2 is just to approve, to amend the agenda to add 5.3.
Is there a motion to accept 5.2?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Salaj?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Yes.
And so now that 5.2 has passed unanimously, we can now talk about 5.3, which is approving the high school summer school program that was presented earlier tonight, that is ready to be approved by you and not wait an extra month.
Is there a motion to accept 5.3?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Salaj?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, I would ask that we take a 10-minute recess before we go to executive director of operations report. Mrs. Cook would set up and do her presentation, going back to 4, or excuse me, 3.9 before we move to items 6. House Bill 58, Senate Bill 24, this is a question, but this is a last person, how the House will send a bill, and how our Springfield schools, how are those changes going to affect us? So with that being said, Andrea has to get together a presentation about the items, so I turn it over to Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Frayer. I will do my best tonight to update you as well as I can on about 170 pages of documentation that I just got yesterday, so luckily it's noted, and we had some time to do some research for you. So to start out, we will start with House Bill 58. What I want to go over, I don't want to give a long, drawn-out government lesson, but I do want to point out that these are bills. They may or may not become laws, they're written, I'm reporting as they are written as of yesterday, they may change several times, they may never pass. So I do want to preface the presentation with, these are only bills at this point. To House Bill 58, the sponsor of that was Representative Brenner and Representative Slavy, and it was introduced in February of '17 to the 132nd General Assembly under the category of students and learning. Within this House bill, the only amendment to the bill is that for handwriting instruction, it could run through fifth grade, ensuring students develop the ability to print letters and words legibly by third grade, and create a readable document using legible cursive handwriting by the end of fifth grade. So that is the only amendment to House Bill 58. It is in the monitoring stage as far as progress goes, and it is pending the Higher Education and Workforce Development Committee. Are there any questions over House Bill 58 as it stands yesterday?
So, so given the vagueness of that, I mean, could you even speculate on what the impact would be if you had to implement that over the course of a couple of years, and is that a major change to curriculum right now?
I wouldn't call it a major change to curriculum, we are, we're currently doing the portion for the handwriting using regular print text, so that's not a change to what we're currently doing. The change would be in adding the cursive back into the curriculum, our teachers are already licensed to be able to do that, so that would not require professional development on our part with our teachers. Due to the licenses within the placement in K5, they already have the background to be able to teach that. It would interfere time-wise with our curriculum, so I always call it robbing Peter to pay Paul, so something else would have to go away to bring in the time to be able to do that. Teaching a childhood to write in cursive and read in cursive takes more than just 20 minutes a day, so we have our elementary folks over here... So, um, we have our elementary folks over here who could attest time-wise. Um, Tracy, I think you were teaching elementary when we were doing cursive, so you could give some type of a background on time, since I've caught you with a mouthful of food in my.
Typically, it was that instruction that took place in third grade. You know, the cursive letters were introduced and then, you know, they practiced that throughout the course of the year using a, you know, practice letter, cursive, you know, handwriting book. And then we would, you know, encourage that and incorporate that in the writing pieces in the fourth grade, which is where I taught, so that we can continue that, you know, the cursive practice, um, and then throughout.
I don't have a whole lot of passion one way or the other, but I'll just give you an anecdotal story. Um, my mother went on a trip to Europe and one of her grandchildren did not read her travel journal. She happens to be a graduate here from her high school. Um, having come through the system, we have not taught that in so long time, and that's a shame, I think, that they're unable to do that. So as I said, that's not one that I would stand against or for. Whatever direction that goes, we'll make our adjustments appropriately.
So currently, do we, is it a teacher choice?
Yeah, for testing. Which will be just about a month after testing and intergrating. So our focus right now is on reading and writing across the curriculum. The teachers have time after the students take their state tests, which is about a month for them. Some get to it, some do not.
In third grade?
It, it is not a required standard. Yes, third. And we know that that's our big year for our reading test. So a lot of our time is spent on reading.
Right, and that's in fourth grade, it would be anything that they want to do with it. So if they didn't have it in third grade, you might see it introduced in fourth grade?
Under this bill, if this bill passes as is.
Oh, I'm saying what we, I'm trying to compare what we're currently doing and some.
Some students never see it.
Right. And some students might see it pieced if their teacher feels passionate that it should be there. You might see it like in fourth grade because it, they might not have gotten it in third.
Small minorities. The majority of our students never see it.
Okay. Thank you.
There, you're welcome. Okay, moving on to Senate Bill two sixteen, as you can see, this one is to amend a litany of sections. So I know you can't read all of those numbers, but I'm happy to share the presentation with you. If you want to drill down into all those sections for the amendment, this one was brought forth by Senator Huffman back in October of seventeen to the hundred and thirty-second General Assembly. It is currently pending the Senate Education Committee. And this, um, this portion I have spotlighted, as I said, this, this is the biggie, this is the hundred and sixty-two page document. I have highlighted what I feel affects Springbrough's curriculum. So I obviously am not going to take the whole evening to go over all hundred and sixty-two pages of this bill and the amendments to about twenty different sections of it, but I am going to go over what I feel is important to Springbrough and our curriculum. The first highlight, um, here is that there's a request to AIR, which is American Institute of Research. Those are the tests that we take, um, in the spring for our students in grades three all the way through high school. And that request is that information and materials for assistance with those tests, including practice assessments, study guides, and test prep materials be made available during next school year. In our opinion, from a curriculum standpoint, in Springbrough, we have no interest in this. We are not into test prep. We don't need a company to give us samples of a test, so we can drill and kill our kids to death before spring tests. If we're teaching the curriculum as it's written, and if the test is testing the curriculum as it's supposed to be testing it, this will have no impact on us all. Okay, um, next one is to change the adoption of diagnostics assessment, assessments to begin in grade one as opposed to in kindergarten. Right now, we do the K R A, kindergarten ready assessment. In kindergarten, this bill is requesting that those kindergarten assessments be moved to first grade. So all testing would begin in first grade. Our fact in Springbrough would be if this change is made, we will continue to do assessments for kindergarteners. We will continue to assess where are they starting, where are they going throughout the years? We have our kindergarten specialist over here, and where are they ending? So in essence, whether this changes or not, we will continue to assess our kindergarteners.
This one did just get removed yesterday. I just got that update.
As it should.
Yeah, so that one's.
Trying to keep my opinion out of most of this.
I agree with you. So that one's good. And I'm glad to hear we would have been doing it, but that's off that bill now.
It is throughout the bill, so it's in, it's, that amendment was probably twenty spots within the bill, so. Glad to hear that one's gone. Okay, next one, school districts, um, as you know, over the past five or six years, we keep coming to you and saying, we need to ready our students by putting Chromebooks in front of them. They will be required by State Ohio to test via a electronic device. This portion of the amendment is stating that any student, bless you, in grades three through five will no longer be required to test on an electronic device. Rather, the district can say, I want this small group of children to work from paper and pencil. I want the bulk of our students to be on electronic, or I want the bulk of our students to be paper and pencil. We can decide who we're going to test in what manner. Kind of like this one. All right, moving along, uh, the following, um, school-mated reporting on the following items, whether they are completed or not. So basically, all we're doing is we are saying, we do this, we don't do this. And that is training for physical restraint or seclusion, training on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, training on CPR and AED, AED being the machine that if somebody has a heart attack, we hook them up and bring them back. Um, establishment of a wellness committee, review of emergency management plans, and compliance with nutritional standards. We're in a good place on all of these within our school district. So, you know, these, um, these possible amendments to the bill likely will not affect Springbrough because we are in a good spot doing our trainings and following these compliance laws already. All right, this one, I, I, I don't know where this one's coming from because it completely conflicts with ESSA, with the federal guidelines, um, for schools. But this one is that statistical data reporting for billing report cards shall include a minimum of thirty students in every group. ESSA is stating and requiring that schools bring subgroups down over the next three years to a minimum of ten. So I, this one's a little confusing to me, why anybody's bringing this forward if they have any idea about what ESSA is. Now, the reasoning for it, because it is statistically unreliable and that possi, the possibility of students being ID'd, so if it's a subgroup that's small enough, let's say there's a subgroup of ten children, and they have a score that's either significantly higher than the rest of the population, significantly lower, that would allow us to be able to ID those students. I like their reasoning. However, it's in direct opposition to what ESSA feds are expecting us to do for our reporters. All right, moving along, teacher evaluations. We'll guide the development of professional growth plans and improvement plans. We like this. Um, the language to change would remove the value-added component, and it would change the text on that portion to quote, "high-quality student data." We don't know what they mean by "high-quality student data" at this point. It's rather vague. Um, they're not referring to any particular item. They're not referring to teacher-generated testing. They're not referring to value-added, or actually taking the words "value-added" out. Um, removal of the language that allows the board to have an accomplished teacher, which is the highest rating of teacher evaluation, complete a project approved by the board. That is not something that we have entertained, um, through our local professional development committee or our board currently, so that would not make any difference here near, here or there for us. And removal, um, regarding student academic growth measures as they're tied to teacher evaluations. So we're not evaluating teachers based on the student's progress. Um, and prohibiting the use of shared attribution of student performance. This is huge in Springbrough. We do use shared attribution. So we share the fact when our students do very well. All teachers contribute to that. Our hope is that all teachers, regardless of what they're teaching, are teaching some mathematics and they are teaching some reading. So Springbrough has had shared attribution across all teachers throughout the district, and this language would remove the ability to be able to do that.
Help me understand that a little bit more, like.
Okay, if, if, if a, if our district receives a certain level showing student progress in value-added, our current.
On the report card.
Yes, on the report card. Our LPD, C, our Local Professional Development Committee, has written language that we all share in that success. If it's not so successful, thank goodness we have been very successful, we all share in the lack of success. So when it comes to teacher evaluation, because we've done well, all teachers have the ability to raise their evaluation status as a whole. So we're, we're sharing that success across the board. So we say that the music teacher is teaching some writing. Here, she is teaching the students how to write lyrics. She is sharing in the attribution of the writing and reading comments.
I see.
That they're asking that that language goes away.
Okay, thank you.
That would affect us. Okay, and within licensure, we're looking at changes to licensure. Um, we're, we're looking at kind of going back in time whereby the new licensure would specify whether a teacher is licensed to teach grade K eight or six twelve. Currently, we have teachers that are pre-K to three. We have teachers who are four to nine. We have teachers who are one to eight, the old licensure, we have teachers who are seven to twelve. So this would take licensure, um, moving it back to a K eight or a six twelve licensure. Six twelve is a new one. We haven't seen that combination before. We've seen a seven twelve before, but we've never seen a six lumped in all the way to senior year, which is a little bit concerning to me. My hope is that if somebody is passionate about teaching middle-level children, that they take some more elementary-based coursework because, um, I, I taught seniors primarily, and teaching seniors versus sixth graders is, ten smiling's night and day. Absolutely night and day. Um, we will be looking at four different types of licensure. A resident educator, which we currently have. Extendable means if a teacher has not met the requirements within four years of the resident educator license to become a professional, we can extend that a year for them. We already do that. I already have some resident fives now. Um, professional educator is a five-year license that is renewable. A senior professional educator, five years renewable, and a lead professional educator, five years renewable. I think we have one lead here in the district right now at the high school. So there's a little bit of change with regard to licensure statuses. Um, preschool staffing, this would be a huge hit for us financially. We're looking at a change from a sixteen to one ratio for children, if enrolled in a half-day, to a twelve to one. Financial hit, folks. So right now, we're staffing at a sixteen to one ratio with an eight in eight disabilities, difficult peers. This change would be extremely expensive for us to go from a sixteen to one to a twelve to one. Sorry if I just disappointed some folks in the room. I know over here, but I'm happy here. So I don't know what will happen with that, but it's an expensive endeavor. Gifted. Um, the way it's, the way this is written, they don't write out the removal of the sixty hours of professional development requirement currently in place. It's a little bit, it's a little bit hairy when you read through the bill and on the gifted portion and you go, what are they talking about? So you kind of have to go back out to the revised code to read it. The revised code, um, Ohio's Association to Gifted Children, that professional organization worked very hard with the legislature to get the sixty hours in. I would think that same organization is going to kind of pound this portion of the bill to keep it in. So, um, the writers of the bill are asking that that whole segment be removed. That would be a bad thing in some districts because there would be gifted children running around with teachers that have no professional development gifted. We will continue to offer and demand professional development for our teachers to get to children. So if this changes, you will not see a change in our delivery of, of professional development for those teachers.
I have a question.
That's very unfortunate about this, yes.
I have a question on the licensure. Our email from OSBA, um, and maybe this is a change, because that one was sent over the weekend, like the, um, K R A test, that one changed yesterday, or today, yesterday. So they said that for the licensure, um, the band was pre-kindergarten to six and then five to twelve?
I, I have the bill language here, which I did pull from OSBA. Um, this would be on, if you don't mind, I'm just going to hand it to you, the thirty-eight fifty-five.
That's, I mean, I just, I agree with you, what you're saying, but these are such, I mean, like, mine was K eight, but now that being, and it just feels like that's such a.
It's a huge, it's a big.
It is. At the pre-K up to, it said five here, this is a huge. And when was this?
Yesterday.
And this was yesterday? And when is, is this the vote for today that had to happen on it? Like, when does this vote happen? One of the votes that.
I think they have a, they'll have a meeting on the fourth, fifteenth, was that different?
Okay, one of the votes had to happen, was, was with hold, or which I doubt was going to happen today, was some of this, but I didn't know what piece of it.
I have not done anything today, but this was as of yesterday.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so all of this, I have put in the line, reference lines here, if you want to look them up. So the, the black bullet would be these first, the second black bullet, these lines, third black bullet, these lines.
Can you send that PowerPoint?
You bet.
This is super helpful.
You have me too. Okay, college credit plus, this would be a good one. Um, this is saying, the course is delivered on the high school campus. So let's say we are offering a writing course here. That would preclude any of our students from taking that same writing course at the local universities. If we should decide to start offering courses here, that would keep our students from taking those courses there. What I would want to do if this bill goes to law is to research what courses are most popular and see what a cost analysis would be to offer them here in-house. Um, the other language, which I got really excited about, but then I reminded myself this is a bill, not a law, is that we would share fifty percent of the cost of the textbooks with families. So Dan's going, not going to happen. So I got a little bit excited about this, then I reminded myself this is not law. All righty, I tried to fast-forward that, uh, presentation for you so as to not give you all to sleep, because I know it was a very dry topic. Are there any questions or comments that I can answer for you?
It's, in your opinion, is there anything we as a board for our district should be doing to make a statement about what we feel is important to support Springbrough? Are there some things I'm pretty passionate about?
Yeah, I mean, I, I put the names of the sponsors of each of the bills in here. If there's something that you're passionate about, or there's something that you see that's going to cost us significant amounts of money. So for instance, when I brought up the preschool going from sixteen to twelve, right now, I think our preschool does an outstanding job at sixteen to one. Um, could they do better at twelve to one? Sure, all of our classrooms could do better with a smaller student-to-teacher ratio. But i, if there's something that you see that I think is going to adversely affect us as a district, whether that's financially or takeaway opportunities for students, I would highly encourage you to get in touch with the sponsors of each of these bills.
And that's in your PowerPoint?
It is.
Okay.
And I'll have those, I'll, I'll share this document with you before you walk out of the room. Bye-bye.
So I think we have.
The items that are really, I mean, that, that really are critical to us, uh, either Andrea and I or I, I think we have, are representative, are senator, individual. And because of the relationships we've built, you know, we don't come to them every day with something. When, when I go to Scott Lips and I've told him this before, if I come to you, it's big. And so we just don't talk a lot. We talk about the big, there's a couple of big things we'll talk about. As board members, nothing wrong with writing a letter as a board or as individuals to sponsors of the, the bid. As not only a parent, but a committed member of our group, that's what we meant. We will have a conversation, uh, what affects our district individually or possibly with our local people. Both are very well-respected and are listened to very well. But other than that, yeah, certainly write letters, nothing wrong with it.
Can you email us who you feel are all of the local, are the local people that you would recommend that we contact?
Not only local, but we'll let you know who the players are to stay too.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
You are.
Yes?
We are now up to items six, six one through six six.
All righty, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration, Mr. President. Uh, six point one, approval of the two thousand eighteen eighth-grade trip to Washington, D.C., as we talked about in the, um, work session. Um, the approval to contribute fifty thousand dollars for, uh, the junior high right turn lane project. Uh, six point three is approval of the lease purchase for eight buses. And six point four is our normal personnel items. Uh, a few things want to adjust there. Uh, Mark Walls is retiring. Mark Walz is retiring, our head groundskeeper. He's been here a long time, obviously thirty years since he is retiring. And he's a young man to retire, but it will give him time to spend some time with his father and all that, who's, you know, not doing as well as he could. And when he went and looked at retirement and continuing on working, it was better for him to go ahead and retire and go from there. So it was a tough decision, but as you can see, it's a quick one because he's retiring effective three-two. So, yeah, it's soon. Kathy, whoops, we have an assistant cook that's leaving, it's resigning. We're employing an OT. She was here before, we're bringing her back. She did a good job. She left for personal reasons, so we're bringing her halftime. I'm sorry, speech. I said the same thing the last time. She's speech, but she, we appreciate what she did and she's coming back at the same step she left on. As you can tell, Kristen Black, who's my new human resources admin assistant. Sue Weisong is going to be the starting next school year. She will be the head cook down at Dennis, which is huge because she's been in the district thirteen years or so. So it's good to keep her and move her on up into that. You approved Marilyn's retirement last board meeting, so this is a replacement for her. We've got some volunteers for the music department, some various substitutes there, and then some leave of absences.
Is there a motion to accept six-one through six-four? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Babst?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty, and then we've got our...
Can you comment on that real quick?
Sure.
I just have a real quick thing to say about Mark Walz.
Yes.
He is going to be a hard one to replace. He is out on those grounds all the time, whether it's weekends and evenings. And he is such a hard worker, so I just want to publicly thank him for his years here. He is an amazing, amazing employee and just a huge asset to our district.
Yes, definitely will be missed.
Will be.
So, all righty. Next, we've got our standard report for supplemental athletic positions. And you'll see there, most of those are our spring sports that are coming up that we're hiring for. So we've got the track, lacrosse, tennis, some softball, baseball. As for your approval?
Is there a motion to accept six point six?
Summit. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Babst?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Have stayed.
Thank you.
President, before we go to item seven, if I don't say it, I'm going to end up forgetting just because I'm a man and I'm getting older. I want to make sure the board was aware, as part of the discussion earlier with the HR director's position, we do plan to post that next week. So hopefully we have someone brought to the March Board to agree to approve. With that, we may have some other things from the district, but this is a good time for comments, questions, and support.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Hultrey for bringing in her presentation for NASA. I think if I did my math correctly, which hopefully nobody's checking, but I think we got a fourteen thousand dollar grant and we ended up serving over thirteen hundred students, which is about ten bucks a student, which is incredible value, I mean, given the lessons that were provided. Thirty-one teachers participated. I mean, again, I think that was just a resounding success and it's really impressive. You know, at the end of the day, fourteen thousand dollars is not a lot of money. So it's incredible what you got for ten bucks a student. So that was great. Again, I'll voice my excitement for the preschool program at the same time. This thing keeps getting bigger and bigger, so I think, you know, it's up to us as a board to continue to look into that and make sure we've got good plans for the future because it seems like it's growing very rapidly. And even what we just saw with Mrs. Cook's presentation, that's also a little bit concerning. So I guess we'll need to do a little effort, see on our part with our state reps. Another great board meeting and certainly appreciated the demonstration too with STEM students. That was awesome. So, thank you.
Just a couple of things. I don't know Mark Walz personally, but I know him through his reputation. It's hard to lose thirty-year people like that. Hopefully that doesn't make it harder on you. Hopefully you'll find another Mark Walz to take up that position. And, you know, just the presentations that you organize and put on every board meeting, they're really gratifying, interesting. So, and that's all.
I have a few things. One, I thought it was really neat with the presentation how they had utilized local businesses with Motoman and Wizard of Bright, who usually joins us with STEM Fest also. I just think there's always times for us to reach out to the local community so to tie that in with STEM Fest. And that Motoman was also utilizing a parent in the district. So I just, kudos to them. I think they did a great job of utilizing that money, but also with connecting, making connections in the district. So that was awesome. And also with the, I'm glad that we were able to look at what we're doing, the partnership with the city. I think that anybody that drives up seven forty-one will be happy that we're supporting the city and working alongside the city with this turn lane at the junior high. I'm very grateful. I, very few times that I have to drive that, but when I do, it's absolutely miserable. So appreciate the city putting that investment there and I fully support our district jumping in and putting some money towards it. So hopefully that will help everybody in the future. I'm on social media and it was neat this week because somebody, I don't know if they're, I think they're new to the area maybe, I don't know. They just asked, can somebody tell me about Spring Grove schools? Because it's a very open question. And it was just really neat. People were, there weren't specific teachers listed. It was just a lot about overall experiences that were very positive. Of course, you have a few here and there that had questions, you know, had just some, just some, I have a few concerns, but overall, it was just some very, very, very positive from people all the way from the littles to my kids in college. And they're successful because of their experience. So just appreciation to the teachers and the commitment level of doing what's right for our students. So it was just neat to see a majority of the people that commented. I had never even heard of, heard their names before. So it was different people in the community that were speaking up. So that was really cool to see. The HR position, he's another person that does about two and a half different positions. So I'm not one to support a lot of new positions, but I do fully support this because I think that John has been doing over and above for quite a while. And so, John, thank you for all that you've done and you haven't let a lot of balls drop. You really have figured out how to prioritize, but I appreciate what you've done. And I do think that there's things that we can, you can do more. And when we take some of that stuff off your plate, you can do some of what you want to do at a deeper level. So I appreciate though you picking up what, you know, different things when we needed it. So thank you for that. The last thing was just, can you comment, because there have been so many questions because of our snow days? Can you help us understand what, where we're at with the snow days and making them up and hours versus days?
Sure. So the state of Ohio a few years ago put us to hours instead of days. They did that because every, every two or three years, you'd end up with a big snow year where we might have eight, nine, ten days off. And a lot of times, either way northeast Ohio or southeast Ohio might have virtually fourteen days off. So the House and the Senate has to get together and weigh the five school days and maybe give two or three more days. So they took the hours so low, the state would never be bothering again. We here at Spring Grove with this depend upon the building seventeen to twenty days of school and not have to make it up if we were strictly on the state hours. It's not a good educational sense. You know, students need to be here as many days as possible. Five days, we can deal with it, but any more than that, we should make it up. How a school district makes it up is up to them. There's actually one school that was airborne today. It came out of the news that they're just going to add a day at the end of the school year. Adding days at the end of the school year may or may not be the best option for us. I personally don't like them because it's, state testing is already done. Kids are thinking towards summer. There was a year I was superintendent of the district and this thirteen days. And so we need to make up eight. To do that, we added a half hour at the end of the day for a set amount of days, maybe nine weeks or so. And the teachers use that especially pre-K through twelve, K through six for intervention periods to be able to help students get ready for testing because we put those days far enough ahead of the testing schedule. The junior high and high school not only use it for testing for students who need it, but also student organization involved. As administrative team, we're going to be on Tuesday, principals, assistant principals, and administrators for our regular monthly meeting. And our first agenda item is going to be this. What's the best way to do that here in Spring Grove? It's my second year here. We haven't had to make up days since I was here. A lot of these guys know the kids, know the community maybe a little bit better than me, so we're going to have a team decision. Whatever that decision is, the board would need to improve because it'd be a change in calendar. But right now, we have five days out. We don't have any to make up now. We believe the weathermen because they are always right. The prediction for February, March is above-average temperatures, above-average rainfall. Not ice, not snow, right? Yes. So if that goes, we may not have another meeting. But if we do, we'll be ready for that.
Kind of mean you're all just keep your jobs. If you're wrong, still keep your right.
That's right. No thanks.
Thank you.
And that, by the way, I think that's a important enough topic. And once we're done with the meeting, that one we share with you, want to make sure that the community understands too, what we're doing and how we're discussing this. So we'll get something out there as well.
Thank you.
Walz?
I think everything that I have on here has been covered by others, but I would also just extend my thanks to the students that were part of the presentation and Mrs. Cook and for Mrs. Hultrey for their work in securing that grant. I think the part that stood out to me that I liked, you know, the vast was just seeing, you know, how our teachers, you know, just their willingness to come together and find new ways to reach and challenge our students. The fact we had, was it thirty, thirty-one, I think, you know, the teachers that went through the development. I just think it speaks volumes about their commitment to our children and to, again, finding new ways to really, to really reach them. So just kudos to everybody involved with that. It's a great, a great program. I too wanted to thank the city, you know, for their efforts in terms of the turn lane. I'm happy that we're able to partner with them, but I really am appreciative of the fact that they're stepping up as much as they are to really assist with the turn lane there at the junior high. I too wanted to express my support for the addition of the HR director position. Like Mrs. Babst stated, you know, I think that's not something we take lightly in terms of adding administrative positions, but, you know, when you have somebody that's wearing as many hats as Mr. Pennell, I mean, it's definitely necessary. And so while I'm appreciative of the fact that you've, for that burden for so long, I do think it's the right thing to do as a district. And so I'm supportive of that. Thanks to all the people that donated. You know, there were a lot of great donations in there today. And just thank you to all of those individuals, organizations. And then also, the last thing, I didn't get the exact organization, and you mentioned it, but Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Quarter, you guys talked about, you guys were able to raise the twenty-seven hundred dollars. Was that, I'm assuming that was staff and students and everybody, as a building? And what was that in support of?
More welcome, it's fostered your outreach.
That's great. That's a great number and just, I just wanted to highlight your efforts in raising for that organization, raising funds for that organization. So thank you to everybody that was involved with that. So that was it.
Want to thank Andrea, that whole tree for going through that grant presentation. The kids did a great job over there. I couldn't see the ball rolling down, so I didn't know what was going on. But we saw it. That could be our eight.
It hits.
Oh, you could see it?
It hits.
Yeah. Also, John, I support the HR. Hopefully we'll give you more time to ride your motorcycle. Now that, you'll just find other things to do.
Exactly.
Coming up this Saturday is the Valentine's Day dance, whatever, get-together by the boosters over at Heatherwood. It's one of their bigger fundraisers that they try to have. The boosters, obviously, for years have done a great job in supporting our athletic program. I think it's forty dollars or maybe forty or forty-five dollars by yourself and then made five for a couple or something like that. Hopefully, you know, it was okay last year, but hopefully it'll, you know, even more this year and it'll keep growing. So if you're bored this Saturday, bring your girlfriend along or whatever. Come to the dance. I believe that's it.
We've got a couple of administrators with some building highlights. We'll start off with John Franks.
Yeah, exciting time for eighth graders at the junior high. We tried something a little bit different this year. Their schedules are due tomorrow, I think, or their course selections are due tomorrow for their freshman year. And we actually had high school teachers come down to the junior high today, almost for my benefit too, because I'm overwhelmed by the amount of choices that our eighth graders are going to be freshmen, what courses that they can take. So just today, we had computer programming down there, information technology. I guess there's game design classes there this year, which our students love, and I didn't even know about that. Digital media arts, food and nutrition, and then project lead the way engineering and biomedical science. So the whole eighth grade class, all five hundred of them, received information from not only teachers from the high school, but also students to make those great choices. And then we've had Ms. Ornsborn, the ninth grade guidance counselor, in lunches, helping kids answer questions, everything. So it's just been a fun process. The eighth graders are excited with all the options that they have next year.
To add to what Mr. Franks just said, you noticed all those programs, Andrew Anderson will be nodding here. Every one of those was Warren County Career Center program. Shows how many programs we are now partnering with Warren County Career Center. And they coming and helping us promoting these right down to junior high level. So I think it's a great partnership. I think that partnership is getting better and better with the new superintendent. And to make another example, what happened today at the junior high. Our last presentation from the crowd, Andrea Cook.
Next week is Ohio Educational Technology Conference. And we are thrilled to be taking a team up to be presenting in two areas. We will be presenting our NASA information amongst other educators in the state of Ohio that also received a NASA grant. So I'm excited to see what other school districts did with their monies and their projects. And we will also be presenting utilizing virtual reality goggles. So Tuesday, we have our NASA presentation. Thursday, we have our VR presentation. And we're really excited about both of those presentations. We spent a couple hours today going over all technology subscriptions that our children access in all areas, K through twelve. So we are ready to hit the vendor floor to see if we can do some negotiating and get the best of the best for our children for next year at the best pricing.
Thank you very much. The last thing that I have, this was emailed to you about Tuesday, March thirteenth, Southwest Region State Conference from OSBA. You did get the full agenda. We do not know if any of our nominations have won, but we do know that Junior RLC will be there for the presentation colors. Yes, I will be there and anyone else that wants to come, just let me or Ashley know. Mr. President, that's all we have. We have no second session tonight.
We are adjourned.
I should have said that earlier tonight. I think I probably should have said it. We have no second session.